Good evening. I'd like to call the Select Board meeting for Wednesday, October 1st, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Hollis Community Building. Just so you all know, we're not going to be meeting here anymore. Our next meeting will be in the new community, the new town office. So we'll be meeting over there. Okay. So I'd like to have a roll call from my left.
Mike Carnois.
Roger Hicks.
Mary Hoffman.
Jack Regal.
Danny Rumian.
And our town manager.
Dick Moran. I'm here.
You're here. So I didn't get to find out exactly who was going to present from Primo Brands. I know that they're going to be presenting on the water monitoring and reporting processes because we've gotten some concerns expressed by residents about wells going dry because of our drought. And so they're going to explain why that isn't their problem, is my understanding. I apologize for not knowing your name, sir.
Oh, it's Mark Dubois.
Mark Dubois. I should have known that. And so we're going to limit it to just the water issues. If you have any issues with truck speedings or the trucks or the number of trucks, please save that for a different day, and we can always invite them back. But we'd like to keep it with the water monitoring because Mark is, you know, busy. So if you want to present, Mark? And I think I don't... Who's here from Poland Spring?
So it's myself, Mark Dubois, and then Matt Reynolds is also a licensed geologist that's going to be presenting with me.
Okay.
And then we have Jeff Vino, the factory manager.
Hi.
And Heather Printup, our public relations manager.
I knew Heather, but there's a lot of new faces tonight. So thank you for coming.
No problem. No problem. I will try to make it quick, but I know you have some questions. So we were just going to do about 10 minutes with a few slides to orient folks and then take your questions, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Great. And then I have, we, today's actually a big day for water, believe it or not. It's October 1st. It's the start of the water year. Geologists like myself measure water. From September 30th is the end of the water year, and October 1st is the first day of the new water year. So that's how we actually measure water in Hollis, is on October 1st to September 30th schedule. So I have a, because it's the end of the year, I have a special report for you to pass out, and then I have extras to leave in Town Hall for folks that might want to stop by.
Thank you.
Thank you. So everybody's got a different year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So again, my name is Mark Dubois. I'm a licensed geologist and hydrogeologist with Poland Spring. If we go to the next slide, we have the correct spelling of my name. And we're also joined with, joined here with Matt Reynolds, a hydrogeologist with Drummond Environmental in Portland. He's a third-party geologist that does work for Poland Spring. So we hire people to actually do monitoring work for us. I don't do all the work myself. And if we go to the next slide, just a little bit of an overview of what we are in Maine. Poland Spring is actually 10 sites in Maine right now. So we have 10 different spring sites that we withdraw water from, and that's really important during times of drought. Those sites are shown on the screen from Bella Luna Spring up to Lincoln, all the way over to Freiburg and down to Hollis. Hollis is actually our southernmost spring, and it's our only spring in New York County. So it's kind of a jewel for us. It's the largest factory that we have in North America. So all of the United States and Canada, the Hollis factory is the largest. So it's a bit of a crown jewel for us. We take very special care of it. And that's why we actually with, cut back our withdrawal on September 1st by 20% of our onsite withdrawal from Clear Spring in Hollis, Maine. And we actually withdraw water from the other sites, the other 10 sites in Maine, other nine sites. We withdraw water from those sites and bring them in to replace what we cut back in Hollis on September 1st. So it's really important to know that Hollis is a very important place for us. We have three bottling places, factories in Maine, so Poland, Hollis, and Kingfield are our factories, and we own about 6,000 acres, all told when you add up all the sites. And we have about 800 employees, 400 or so, 350 to 400 are in Hollis. So the next slide, we'll talk about water. So this is how we manage through drought very effectively, is that I've been with the company for 21 years. Matt's been around even longer doing work with water. And we've, we've worked through drought. So we worked through the 01, 02 drought, 2001, 2002 was a really bad drought, and then there was a drought of 2016. So we actually work and adapt through those droughts to make sure that we have enough water for future droughts. And how we do that is we tanker water in from these remote sites that are in purple to the factories like in Hollis. So when we cut back water in Hollis, we have to truck water in to replace that water. We see a big downturn in our business, September 1st as well. Labor Day weekend is a big downturn in the water business. So that coincides with the turn to September here. Next slide. Just a quick orientation of what Matt's going to talk about. We're going to talk about actual water level data in Hollis. But let me see if I can work this microphone. So can you guys hear me okay? Yeah. So this is what the aquifer looks like in Hollis. We actually use just the top 100 feet or so, 80 to 100 feet. We don't actually work at any depth in Hollis. We're in the, right at the surface. Dick, you were out there a little while ago checking out our springs right over in here. And what we do is actually withdraw water from a well like this, right before it gets to the spring. We withdraw the water out. The spring has to continue to flow, and that's a key indicator for us. If we don't have spring flow, we're out of business. So we have to keep that moving. So that water table, that top surface there is what we measure each month. So geologists like Matt go around to all 10 of our Poland Spring sites, and we monitor about 500 stations. Over 50 of them are in Hollis. So how we monitor that water table is we just lower one of these devices down the well. This little probe goes down the well. When it hits the water table, it makes a noise. Loud noise when it hits the water table, and you can read off the actual measurement from a tape, from the tape measure right on the, on the device. So that's how we measure the water table. So we do that at about 50 wells in Hollis, including domestic wells that Matt's going to talk about. So we're actually monitoring domestic wells in Hollis for 25 years that are, surround our site. So we're pretty confident in the data that we talk about. So if we go to the next slide, please. This is where we withdraw water. The onsite boreholes are in the top. They're about a mile, mile and a half from the factory towards the Shy Beaver Fish Hatchery. And then we have utility wells that are behind the factory that withdraw water for utility well purposes. Those onsite wells are, look, the landscape looks like this on the lower left, where we have our boreholes. Dick, that's where we went down. And I invite all the selectmen down. If you would like to come out, it would please me greatly if I could tour you out there and show you what it looks like if you haven't been down there. We'd like to do that with you. But it feeds into a spring-fed hatchery and pond system. So we actually have a hatchery that raises fish right next to us. Next slide. This is an overview looking from the sky down at the bottling plant. The utility well area is behind the factory in yellow there. We withdraw water from boreholes 1 through 5, which are around the hatchery. I'm just going to point that out. And then we withdraw water from borehole 6, which is in the California fields off of the Plains Road. Total of 1,600 acres. The watershed is 7,600 acres in size. So it receives a lot of water, I think. In our report, I think it's 9 billion gallons of water fall in the watershed annually. That's even during dry years. And around these areas where we withdraw our water, we have rings of monitoring. So we monitor the production area, right where we withdraw water. Then we monitor a background area outside that, and then we monitor domestic wells outside of that. So we have three rings of monitoring that Matt's going to talk to you about. And I'm going to turn it over to Matt Reynolds from Drummond Environmental for the last couple of slides.
Mark? What, so I will sort of show you some of the data that's being collected as examples and just provide some context. If you want to go to the next slide. So as Mark mentioned, monitoring has been ongoing at this site for 25 years, since the year 2000. So there's a really long database. It's, it's been through several dry periods, wet periods, and so forth. And there's a whole variety of monitoring that's done. The monitoring is done at the boreholes where water's withdrawn. There's monitoring of precipitation at a NOAA station here in Hollis. There are monitoring wells. Those are the 50 or so that Mark mentioned. Those are wells that are measuring the level in the aquifer that's not, not pumped, but just what is the native measure of water in the aquifer. There's also pizometers, which are small monitoring wells right in the spring areas to measure the, the elevation of water in that area. And then part of the monitoring includes surface water. Wells Pond Brook is the key, is a key one. So there's gauges to measure water height. There's flumes to measure flow in those, in those water bodies. And then there's domestic wells that are measured around the area. All, you know, a representative group of domestic wells that sort of encircle the property to make sure that the operations are not having adverse impact and just to understand what's going on. So, and that data is reported every month. It gets sent to the DEP, who does reviews on behalf of the town. And then annually, there's a, a report that comes out that covers the whole water year that the town receives and the DEP receives also. So it's a pretty extensive program of monitoring that's been going on for a long time. Next slide. So Mark mentioned earlier that slide, there were sort of the three areas, the utility wells, the borehole 1 through 5 area, the California field area, which is borehole 6. So it's a little hard to see, but you can see all the little dots there around each area. Those dots are, are those monitoring well points that are around those areas. And so you can see how they're distributed in, in more closely to where the water's being withdrawn. And then there are some perimeter ones as well. Let me just... Can you hear me okay? So there's, in, in the borehole area, there are monitoring wells around here. There are pizometers right close to the, to the spring area. And then there's monitoring downstream on Wells Pond Brook, which just goes off here. Again, same sort of scenario over here, monitoring wells, and then over, over in here as well. So it's a pretty extensive network. In a slide or two, I'll show you data from these two wells as examples. So we'll, we'll, we'll look at the history of that data so you can get a sense of, of where, where things are. Next slide. So as, as everybody knows, and part of the reason that we're here is we're in a, we're in a drought condition. And in the upper left there is the, is last week's drought monitor that shows the, the drought conditions in Maine. The red being the most severe, the kind of oranges was where Hollis is considered, and that's considered a severe drought. And, you know, that's been persisting for a while. Last week's rain, you know, we'll see. This map will come out again, and they update it every week. But clearly, it's been dry. So, and, and so what we've done on these graphs is we've, we've plotted the, the normal line, the normal precipitation is the black line that diagonally crosses each of those graphs. And then... There we go. The blue line is how much the actual rain has deviated from normal over different periods of time. So if, in the upper right, we started in January 2022, and what you can see, that blue line sort of stayed on normal for a while. And then 2023, it was actually quite a wet year. So the overall precipitation was more than normal. And now it's, you know, it's come back down again close to normal over that period of time. The, the lower right is just 2025. And so you can see that it was pretty close to normal, a little below normal. That persisted from the end of last year, which was also dry. It caught up in the middle of the year in, in May and June, and then since July, really, it's been dry. So we've, we're now about nine inches below what would be the normal precipitation over the year. And as a result, we've got these, you know, these dry conditions. Next slide. So this graph shows a couple of wells and the, the monthly precipitations on the bottom. But the, the red and the blue lines at the top are those two wells that I showed you before with the stars in the borehole 1 to 5 area. So you can, and at the very right, the last set of dots are the early September water levels. And so what we measure over time is, is the changes and the ranges of those water levels. And what, that, if you look at that top line, we see there's a couple of things going on. So seasonally, the water table rises and falls naturally. It's higher, tends to be higher in the spring when the snow melts and before the trees come out and, and use up that water. Then it tends to decline through the summer. Sometimes there's a bit of a rise in the fall, and then, and then it, you know, then it'll, it'll drop again as well. And then on top of that, there are trends over time. So as Mark mentioned, at the far left of the graph, the, the levels are lower. That was the 2001, 2002 drought that lasted quite a while. So water levels were low then. And then 2005, 6, 7, 8, there's just lots of rain. So the levels tended to be high all the time. Since then, it's been a little more normal. But you can see where we are now in relation to those earlier droughts. The water levels now are higher than the 2000, 2000, 2001, 2002 drought. They're still a little higher than the 2016 drought. And, and they're actually, the lowest this year was, was in February. So we, the water levels were actually lower in February this year than they are now. And then on the bottom is a, is a USGS well that's in Sanford that they, that the USGS monitors. And you can see the magnitude of the changes are higher, but the general pattern is the same. And so if you just look at the far right-hand part of the graph, the USGS well was high at the end of 2023, when there, when it had been rainy. It dropped through 2024, down to February 2025, and then it, then it was wet again in the spring for a while. Remember 14 Saturdays in a row where it rained every Saturday? That brought us back up some, and now it's down there. But overall, you know, this is the, this is the reason to do the monitoring, is so you can keep an eye on things. You can make adjustments. And to Mark's, you know, Mark commented earlier that based on the data and the, you know, the sort of medium-term look ahead as being continuing to be dry, they were able to dial back on the, on the withdrawals for Hollis so that the levels didn't continue to go down. Next slide. Another question came up about compliance monitoring. And so there, the, the water level data is, is a component of the required monitoring. The other part, and the part that the, the DEP is really focused on, is the stream flow monitoring. This is, this is data from Wells Pond Brook, and that's sort of the key compliance measure for the site. Now, the, the Wells Pond Brook is fed by the springs that are, are on the property. And so, and those springs are in turn fed by groundwater. So Wells Pond Brook is a good indicator of the overall condition of the groundwater because it discharges into the springs, and that, those in turn feed the brook. And so the way that the compliance requirements are, are constructed is they vary month to month. So the higher flows naturally occur in April, and so the requirements for flow are higher. The red line is the minimum flow requirement, and the green line is the, is 120% of that. So it's what we call the alert level to increase monitoring frequency. And what you can see is that if you go to the right here, that's the current condition in Wells Pond Brook, and it's pretty significantly above the compliance conditions. The, it, it, and it, you know, but it, it was highest in June, as we all know, it rained a lot. And then it started to come down, and it's continuing to come down. But it's, it's holding pretty steady there. And so that's a, you know, that's another metric that, that Mark looks at in terms of deciding how much, you know, pumping to do and so forth. And the black, so the, the, the blue wavy line is the actual data, and the, the black line is a 12, I think it's a 12-point average, just to kind of smooth out so you get the overall trends a little better. So, next slide. And finally, this is a slide of one of the residential wells that are monitored. These are actually monitored with automatic transducers that measure water level every four hours. And so the other thing that's embedded in this data is when those wells are used by the homeowner, the level goes down in the well as a result of their use. And so if you compare this to the previous, to the other graphs, you can see generally that the pattern is similar. That was low in 2001, 2002 was higher in 2005, 6, 7. It was low in 2016. And, and so you get the same overall pattern. The individual dots at the bottom are when the homeowner's using the well. So that just brings the water down. And then kind of the, you can, you can get the trend. And again, in this homeowner situation, the level now is down. It's higher than it was in 2016. It's higher, still higher than it was in 2001, 2002. It's pretty close to what it was in this particular well in February this year. So it's, again, it's, it's, it's dry. It's been dry. It's not, not a surprise. But it's not really outside the bounds of what's been seen before. And so we wouldn't expect that there be any problem with the operation of this well. And, and again, all these are monitored continuously. So I think that's the last slide. Yeah. So again, monitoring's been going on for quite a long time. We have a good sense of the record. We have a good sense of where we are in the range and what to watch and look out for, you know, if it begins to rain again or if it continues to be dry.
Thank you. So I did have a question about why you chose September 1st to cut back. I mean, what, was it the data that you saw? Was it just a trend?
It's the trend. I started cutting back, back in July, a little bit. So we have a permit for about 237 million gallons a year. I'm leaving probably 10 to 12 million gallons on the permit this year. So we started cutting back even before September.
Okay.
But we're cautionary. Like I said, it's the crown jewel for us. It's our biggest factory. I will be out of a job if I run the factory out of water. So it's something that I take near and dear, and a 20% reduction is very easy for us to do. It costs money to do that. You have to truck in water. So it does cost money for the bottom line. But we'll do what's right for Hollis here.
So, but there's been drought conditions throughout the state, right?
Oh, certainly. Certainly. We're hearing about dry wells in different parts of the state. The state is now tracking dry wells through a website. And there may be dry wells in Hollis. I talked to the state geologist two days ago, and what's neat, what I've seen in my 20 years, it used to be about 20% of Maine homeowner wells are shallow dug wells. Used to be about 20%. Now, in my 20 years, it's gone down to about 15%. So we still have those wells in Hollis. We have them in Freiburg. We have them every place that Poland Spring works. But those shallow wells will be subject to going dry during these conditions, for sure. We're there to help. We want to help bring water to those people. If you hear about dry wells, we want to know about it. We're bringing pallets of water to people around the state that do have dry well issues. There are not a lot of them. There's like half a dozen that I know of. But if you hear about those issues in Hollis, we want to know, and we want to bring those people water, no matter what the circumstance.
Anybody else have questions? Mike?
No.
Roger?
Yes, my question.
Jack?
I was just wondering, when was the last time you guys had to cut back?
September 2016.
16, okay.
Yep. It was in the Port and Press Herald, I think, if you have, it was a 30% reduction in September 2016.
And that was, what, the last bad drought we had was in 2016?
2016, yep. So if we're headed for worse conditions, we're going to continue to watch that, and we're going to monitor the water levels every month with those meters. So we're going to be out there watching October, November water levels, and we can react and adjust accordingly. But we're going to protect Hollis.
So, but you're monitoring the places that you get water from, too?
Yep, all 10 of them, all around the state, yep.
So what happens if you have to cut back on all of them?
Well, luckily, we've worked, like I said, through droughts, so we have about a 30% oversupply of water. So we can cut back and still be supplying the business.
So where's the 30%?
It's at Spruce Spring and Flagstaff Lake, behind Bigelow Mountain. It's in Rangeley, Dallas Plantation. It's in Lincoln, Maine.
Oh, okay.
They're places that we don't use all through the year. Spruce Spring, for instance, is our northernmost site. It's 40 miles to Canada.
So it's a long hike to down here?
It's a long hike for water and it's a long hike from Hollis. So a driver can just do one trip a day to get to Spruce. So, but that site, we didn't use hardly this year. So it's a seasonal site. We have sites that come on during the summer and provide more water in the summer to help out. So yeah, we can keep cutting back.
So Dan, any other questions?
Nope.
Dick?
And the offer was sincere. If you would like to come out and see the springs, we'll take you all out. And I can do that the next couple of months, if you would like to do that.
Anybody on Zoom or in the audience that has a question? Dwayne?
Hi, I'm Dwayne Hanson. Sorry. I'm Dwayne Hanson, a longtime resident. And I just have a question, and maybe you can answer this. Maybe it's been asked. But the earthquakes, does that have any relation? Because I kind of Googled, I know San Andreas Fault is really big. But there, there is an issue out there with the aquifer.
Yeah, that's a very valid question. Can you advance one slide? So earthquakes are pretty common in Maine. This is the magnitude 1.9 that hit. The epicenter was in Hollis. It says Leamington, but it's actually Hollis.
I thought it was on your site.
It was, I believe it was on our property. But the thing to realize is that this is a 1.8 kilometer wide error margin. So do you see the big circle?
Mm-hmm.
That's the error margin by the USGS on where the earthquake actually was.
Oh.
The one in Waterboro is down here. I'm going to point it out. This was in 2012 or 2013. I felt this at my house. It was a 3.1 magnitude earthquake. These earthquakes are anywhere between five and 10 kilometers down in the earth. So six miles down in the ground. There's no way that our operations can cause an earthquake six miles down in the ground. It's just not possible. But the gentleman is bringing up an important point. It's called ground subsidence. And you can actually de-water an aquifer so much that you actually cause earthquakes. It's a proven phenomenon out there. I've only heard about it in Spain. I haven't heard about it in the U.S. But if you de-water hundreds of feet of aquifer, you can start to cause many tiny, tiny earthquakes. So the, the question is really valid, but it's not anywhere near this operation. We're talking three to five feet of water level change that we showed you on the graph. We're not talking about hundreds of feet. So it's a really valid question.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you have somebody on Zoom?
Yes, Dakota?
Hey there, thank you. My question is the, the info that you said that goes, that gets presented to the town on, I think you said, a quarterly basis, is that available for the public? Or is that just presented to the town board itself?
No, it's all, it's all public information. It's done annually for the town and I think monthly for DEP. So I've just given you the update, though. That is, that's going to be DEP's report. It'll be 40 pages long by that time, but in April. I've given you the four-page version of the report that's going to be out in a few months, yeah. So it's all public information. All 10 of our sites are like that. So all 500 stations, that's all public information in those towns that we work in. Yep.
So how do they access that?
So we're going to give you a paper copy of it so they can come in and read the paper copy if they want. They could ask us for a copy if they were really interested in reading about hydrogeology. We'll give you a copy. But that's the, the methods that we have right now. Is the, it's a pretty thick report. But we could, we could give people individual copies if they needed it.
Okay.
It's going to be sent to the town and posted as a PDF for the town to read on the town site?
Sure. I don't see why not.
Thank you.
Roger?
That's what I was going to ask Bennett, if she could just scan it and put it on the website.
Yeah, we'll give you a PDF. We'll give you the, we'll give you the PDF.
I think we have last year's that Tammy's already scanned, but.
Yep.
So I think we were reviewing it at the Comprehensive Planning Committee.
Yep.
But we wouldn't have to scan it. You have a PDF, you can just give us the file.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, great.
Yep. We can just email it to you.
Let's do that.
It's due to the DEP usually around April 1st. So the, why that report says interim in front of you is because we haven't fact-checked everything yet. We just threw the data out there for you. But we haven't gone through and said, oh, that might be a wrong data point yet. So we'll be smithing that report up for next year.
All righty, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions from anybody? Anybody on Zoom? Any audience questions? It'll be a quiz. Well, thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And now, Dick, if you want to introduce the next speaker? Because I think you've met him.
Well, you're catching me a little bit off guard because you, you folks have the documentation. Ray came to me, whoa, how long ago?
Three months ago.
Three months ago. And we were in the midst of trying to move and get ourselves motivated across the parking lot to discuss the Maine Woodbank Network. And I'll be very honest with you, sir. We, we've had some inquiries from folks saying, hey, what do I, you know, winter's coming. What can we do? What can there be? And I thought even more appropriate now, but possibly too late to make any significant actions. But I wanted to hear about it and wanted the town to hear about it.
Maybe not too late. It has to start sometime.
There you go. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I appreciate it.
So Maine Woodbank was something that was started, I believe, in Freeport. And there's people from the University of Maine that have been working with this. It's a nonprofit organization that's starting to spread all over the state. And I have Rebecca Runkist with me to give you a PowerPoint presentation on this and tell you a little bit more.
Wonderful.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rebecca. I met Ray back in April about. I am a resident of Yarmouth, Maine. I am a volunteer, excuse me. I run the Cumberland Woodbank, which operates out of North Yarmouth and serves approximately a 10-mile radius of that area. It was founded by someone named Bruce Wilds in 2007 when he heard someone in his community was breaking up furniture to stay warm. I took over the Cumberland Woodbank right in COVID. Bruce moved to Topsom, and I helped him start the Midcoast Woodbank. Then Tony DiMarco retired. And I got this email in November of '23. And he was just a person that liked this concept, much like Ray. And he started the Freeport Woodbank, and we helped him get started. So we started to realize we needed more woodbanks. And from that, we started the Maine Woodbank Network, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Because what we realized we could do was help communities start nonprofits and not have to create, start woodbanks and not have to create their own nonprofit. So we legally act as something called a fiscal sponsor. And under our legal 501(c)(3) status, we have different projects across the state of individuals starting woodbanks in their communities. So under this Woodbank Network, we have Freeport. Bethel just started one, which is really exciting. And the Midcoast Woodbank, which is out of Topsom. We can, we can go to the next slide, thanks. But not all woodbanks operate under our umbrella. There's a lot, there are 14 across the state total that we know of. For six months, I worked with University of Maine and Professor Jessica Leahy as a contract employee. And if you go, if you want more information, there are videos and YouTube presentations. There's a National Woodbank Network. So there's a lot of information under the National Woodbank Project. So what is a woodbank in general? There's not one size fits all for every community. In general, it's a volunteer organization. We're all volunteer. Provides free firewood to Mainers who need help, much like a food bank, but has different dynamics within the system of woodbanks. If you ask artificial AI intelligence, this is what they'll tell you a woodbank is. That's why I'm here. We like to talk to human beings. We, we all know poverty exists here in Maine. There's some qualitative data that has been developed through University of Maine Research. We know that 10, and this is census data, not Humane qualitative, 10.4% of Mainers live below federal poverty guideline. And almost 5% of us are in deep poverty.
Go ahead.
Here in Maine, firewood is a significant source of heat. 50% use it for summer all. That varies across the state. And 10% use exclusively wood heat in different varieties of, of, you know, wood firing systems. We like to think it's the original solar energy storage system. And we all know from town management and suburban yard management, a lot of wood is just thrown away. And our goal is to really use that wood within your community, especially with the arrival of Emerald Ashwore and a lot of other invasive pests that are making trees die and come down at a pretty rapid rate. Woodbanks are really a fairly simple concept, unless you're the volunteer admin running them. But in general, it's a fairly simple concept. Discarded wood or donated wood is delivered to a processing site on the national level. Sometimes there are partnerships with the USDA Forest Service bringing in salvaged timber. Recently, where, I think this past spring, we were part of proposed legislation in Augusta that passed supporting outreach and use of state timber that is non-merchandable for woodbanks. So they were in support of this concept. And the state is going to do what they can to help us get the word out. And let's hope maybe someday funding a little bit. So we, in general, process logs into firewood. Depending on the scale of a woodbank, some do five cords. Some really make us look bad, like up in Surrey, and do hundreds and hundreds of cords. We stack it and make sure it's aged so it burns appropriately and safely. Some woodbanks deliver. Cumberland Woodbank delivers a cord of wood to someone in need when they ask. We are barrier-free. There is no intake. There is just need. And so we are there quickly, as quickly as volunteers can be, without general assistance process or lie heat process.
Go ahead.
So this is our, this is our mission, our 501(c)(3) mission. You can go to the website. I won't, I won't read it right now. But it really is community values. And if you work, the more we have them within communities, the more we know who is in need and you build those systems of support locally. So this is a list. There are about two others that are not on this list right now. And if you see where they exist, I don't know why, but primarily they're on the coast. We think it's probably a socioeconomic benefit of people having the time to volunteer.
Go ahead.
But, but the need is elsewhere. The biggest need, the need is everywhere. But the biggest need, based on research from Humane, are these general locations. And I made a little fancy green dot show up, which really. So from Dexter to, go ahead, Monson area, Sagada, Sagada Hawk, and Oxford County. But that, that's just the highest need. But these are areas where we don't have any woodbanks. And so we're trying to build a real strong statewide network. And I'm really glad to be here and maybe convince you guys to help us out.
Go ahead. One more green dot.
And we also welcome corporate sponsorships and support in any way. So again, what I just, you know, anecdotal, I could go on for hours. But this is not a have and have not situation. This is, this is everybody who gets in a pickle. These are, these are people, for whatever reason, it's cold and they need help. They are invited, some volunteer. Many come back and give what they received. This is not a, this, this is a community effort. So what we did with Maine Woodbank, and we're still working on development of it as four volunteers that are a bit busy splitting firewood, is the concept of a woodbank in a box. So when lovely people like Ray randomly reach out, we're, we're here to offer support. And what I did, was that before or after I met you? Well, I knew about you. I saw a grant opportunity and I cranked out a grant request and got a grant from Narragansett Number One Foundation for a Hollis Woodbank. No pressure, but I already have some funds for you.
Cool.
That would help buy your initial equipment. And then I, I told Ray about this. And we've just been in touch and waiting for this opportunity to talk to you guys. So that idea of, of getting that support and helping communities with the planning and development. We also have insurance as a nonprofit that we can provide more. That's a real obstacle for woodbanks that start. And we have an insurance policy that other woodbanks can sign on to, which is affordable, compared to each woodbank paying for insurance. We are developing best practices and training so that everyone's doing it safely.
Go ahead.
And this is what I was talking about earlier. If you go to the National Woodbank Project, if you Google that in quotes, University of Maine, there's a lot more resources available. I did a webinar, a national webinar, that's on a YouTube channel. That link is there that you can watch, that provides a lot of information. There is no ones, some, there's a variety of hosts that can sort of house a woodbank. Churches. The ideal setup, which I would like to offer to you guys, Freeport and Booth Bay are able to operate their woodbanks on town property. The benefit of that is it's more secured, it's flat, it's town property. Freeport operates out of the transfer station. And then the Town of Freeport General Assistance Office takes the requests. And that just saves a lot of, lot of toil, as I can attest to, being someone who has to process those requests. Booth Bay, same thing. They operate out of the transfer station. And a pretty extensive social nonprofit brings in, takes the initial assistance requests. So if you guys had unused town property, that would be super helpful. But the first thing is to find level, safe, relatively secure property to run a woodbank. So that's the overview. And I don't know if Ray has anything to add or if you guys have any other questions.
I do.
Yes.
Are you restricting this to just hardwood, certain soft woods, and no evergreen?
It is just hardwoods.
Okay, because some people have boilers that will burn pine and mahogany.
And, and that is, you know, if, if every woodbank, if you have a relationship with enough need for pine and can assure that it's someone who knows how to safely burn that and, and not muck up their, you know, wood stove.
Yeah.
Yeah. We just don't bother because we don't want to create. That's a lot of education.
Oh, sure.
We, some, some towns partner with the fire station and offer free chimney cleaning or, or looking at the stove in general as well.
Let me ask another question if I can.
Yeah.
If someone had quite a few cords standing, I think you know where I'm going. If someone had quite a few cords standing, I think you know where I'm going, and unable to get it processed, you know, fell it and move it on whatsoever. Is this part of this program that they could venture to and a group come in and just drop all these trees and take them?
We don't fell trees. We won't. But again, we try to partner with tree companies. We won't fell the tree. That doesn't mean there isn't a town that could set that up with professional, you know, tree arborists. What we will do is once, if, if it's a street tree or it's an individual's tree on their property, they own that tree. So if the landowner wants to donate that tree, we will come and cut it into rounds, haul it, load it into trailers and haul it away. It's very hard to find wood haulers with small trailers that can get onto property. They are few and far between. If we find them, we'll pay them to bring the tree length wood to the wood bank and cut it on site and split it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. But Davy Tree has been super cooperative in the Freeport area, helping with those kinds of issues. But that's a huge frustrating obstacle because we get a lot of calls wanting to have trees cut.
Anybody else have any questions, Dan?
Just, you know, typically if there's a, say a big thunderstorm or rolls through or whatever and takes down a bunch of trees, is, do you guys like take like a dump truck full of stuff? Or do you just want the, you know, I'm assuming you guys don't want a bunch of branches and leaves and stuff dropped off too, right?
No, definitely not.
That's, I mean, I offer the idea of a wood bank and everything like that and helping your neighbors. I just, I don't see how much storm or stuff from the town, you know, the town road crews wouldn't be picking through stuff, I'm assuming. They just want to get it out of the way as soon as they can, but...
Yeah, usually the arborists, they lay the small stuff separately. In their standard practice anyway, that gets chipped. And then the bigger stuff is, is left. And that's sort of the way they take a tree down in general. So it, it fits well with getting donated. We don't like to use big DBH. Like if it's a really big old tree, we just don't have the retired people power to use extra long chainsaws. So we usually limit it to a smaller DBH in terms of what donations we accept.
Mike, anything?
One more, like typically when you get a donation, like it's not like a bin on the side of the road. People drop off stuff at, it's, hey, I got some wood. I need to meet you at the wood bank to...
At our, in general, no, because we usually inspect the wood before. A lot of times we've got to make sure that there aren't things that have been. A lot of times suburban trees have metal and stuff that have grown in the tree. Or we got to make sure it isn't so old that it's rotten or that it's not a soft wood. So we usually go to the site, talk to the land over, look at the wood, and then see if we can use that wood.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Mike, anything?
Yep.
Roger?
I'm good. Thank you.
Jack?
Thank you.
Anybody from Zoom?
I forget about Zoom. Hello, Zoom.
Anybody in the audience with any questions?
And happy, our email at Cumberland Wood Bank is simply CumberlandWoodBank, all one word, at gmail.com. That goes directly to me and I'm happy to follow up in any way when I have the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks so much. And I really, I so enjoyed meeting Ray. And I hope we get to work with you guys. Again, we're all volunteer and we're just here to make stronger, warmer communities. So thanks so much.
Thank you. So people are very welcome to stay if you want to. But if you would like to leave, that's okay too because we just have a lot of business on our agenda today. So if you'd like to scoot, please be, be safe. Don't hit any deer or moose on your way home. Thank you so much. Okay, I need a motion to suspend our select board meeting and open the public hearing.
Make a motion. We suspend the meeting and open public hearing to adopt the general assistance maximums for 10125 to 93026 and the general assistance appendices A through F.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So as many of you are aware, every year we have to adopt the new numbers for the appendices A through H. So we repeal and replace the appendixes A through H of the existing ordinance with the new ones that, that come out at the end of September. So they're adopted from October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026. And our, our maximums that we are allowed to use are based on Portland, which is good for us because we get a little more money than some places like Arista County. So we're very happy that we're with the Portland group rather than being by ourselves. So generally, most of them don't go up a whole bunch. They have what's called an overall maximum for each, for the number of people in a household. So for instance, one person in the household, last year it was 1,451. This year it went up to 1,517. So $1,517 maximum that you can earn to be, that you have to earn less than to be eligible for general assistance. So it went up $66. So basically over a group of up to five people went up to an additional $97. So it's not a lot of money, but they do adjust it every year. The housing maximums went up for heat, unheated from 307 for no bedrooms to 319 for one bedroom, from 347 to 358. So most of those went up between $11 and $21 for unheated and for heated from $13 to $22. So it's not a big increase and they are available on our website. The food maximums I always like to see because for one person, you get a monthly allotment of, you used it 292, so it went up to 298. So it went up by $6. And it goes up, up to, they list up to eight people. And for eight people, went up $33 for the total, so. The funeral and the cremation maximum stayed the same. The electrical didn't, stayed the same even though, as many of you know, CMP has been put in a five-year plan to increase the rates per month for the next five years. That the governor is, I guess, giving them a run for their money because year one is supposed to go up by $17 for your monthly bill. Heating, fuel allowances remain the same. And personal care supplements remain the same. So are there any questions from anybody? Because I think Bennett has some sheets that she passed around. Anybody on Zoom? Yep. And Martha can explain a little better.
Yeah, Martha Huff. Yeah. I'm going to say the reason we're tied into Portland, I believe that's because of the cost of our rents.
Right.
And our rents are as high as Portland is out there. So that's why we get grouped in with them. There's a couple other towns right around here too.
Do they get grouped?
That's how that makes that exception. Otherwise you'd be in the York County group, which is...
Very low.
Which is less, yes.
Lot, lot less than us.
For rural areas. So that's where that comes in because our rents are high here in Hollis.
Thanks, Martha. So anything else before we move on? So I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the select board meeting.
Second.
So then I need, we need a motion to adopt the GA maximums for...
You didn't, oh, what?
Oh, so how do you vote?
I, 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 I want to close the hearing.
To close the hearing?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
There we go.
And then we're going to reconvene the select board meeting.
We're back.
We're back.
Make a motion that we accept the general assistance maximums for October 1, 25 to September 30, 26.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
So then everybody needs to sign the paper. The next thing under old business is a tax commitment. So we're going to be committing our taxes this year for fiscal year July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, as existed on the first day of April, 2025. And so we did work with John O'Donnell a lot and had a special meeting with him to explain what he thought we should do. So the assessments that we had for the county tax were $360,160.96. The TIF, the municipal appropriation was $5,644,137. We didn't choose not to put anything in the TIF financing plan because there was no advantage for us to do that. The local education appropriation for the Town of Hollis And the overlay we chose was $275,305 for a total assessment of $12,539,715, $15.54. We did get to deduct some of that, so we don't have a tax bill of $12 million. So we have state municipal revenue sharing of $529,258.73. Homestead reimbursement of $204,285.95. Betty reimbursement of $958,379.25. And other revenue of $2,017,840. So our total deductions were $3,709,763.93. So our net assessment of what we need to tax the residents for So just so you're aware that our mil rate is going to remain at 15, which is what it was last year. So anybody have any comments to make on this before we make a motion?
Nope.
Nope.
Good.
So we were very fortunate to be able to keep the taxes at a mil rate of 15. So we need a motion.
Okay. Just trying to read how to make the motion here.
Okay.
Make a motion. We accept the municipal tax assessment warrant for 2526.
Second.
How do you vote, Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And Jack's aye, and I'm an aye, so. So that's our tax commitment. So like I said, the mil rate's going to be 15 again.
Which means the tax bill stays the same as before.
Right. Unless, unless you had an assessment done by the assessors for having a new garage or a new porch or a new this or a new that. So it may go up based on that, so. So then, who wants to do the new municipal town office update? Like I said, we're going to be meeting in the new municipal town meeting room next time. It's not quite ready for review yet.
I had Jake from Great Falls contact me in regards to so many issues that are over there at this time. And they said they're going to do a punch list. They'll stay on them and try to clean them all up. And they also, he also made a statement that even after it's said and done, they will be overseeing the building for a year or more.
Which is great news.
Okay.
And so, did you...
I am around, but I'm not around.
So Dick, you want to say anything about the move?
Yeah, I want to...
I want to thank everybody because I went on vacation.
I don't think anybody understands the work that the folks at Town Hall went through during the days that the office was closed, through the weekend and into that following Monday, hauling everything in the world that they could get their hands on that should be moved, overseeing the movers to put things where they should be. I think Bennett brought her pajamas and a sleeping bag because I don't know that she ever left the building for four days. And the reason that it opened, excuse me, Tuesday, as it should, was because of the hard work of every single individual in that building. And they should be commended beyond words. I thank them immensely.
And I can second that. I, I had made vacation plans, so I went on my vacation. And I really appreciate everybody getting everything settled. It was easy to find things. It looks nice. And I know that we're finding little things that need to be tweaked, but I think it looks very, very nice. So thank you, everybody that did do the move.
Can I, do you want me to wait until the call?
No.
Martha Huff, Town Clerk, I just want to reiterate what Dick said. And I want to applaud Dick more and as the town manager because he was with us every step of the way. And every time I went to him with an issue, he took, he made sure it got reported and taken care of, which could have been, you know, could have been very difficult. Dwayne, the code office went above and beyond. Bennett, Flinner and Alan Scott helped. And just to give you an idea of what Dick was talking about, we had a hu, we had 50 shelves in the safe, which were double stacked. So that equated to 100 shelves of books that we moved. And I stayed in the old building, put them on the carts and they pushed them over. And then Crystal and whoever she had probably faith, had to unload all those books by herself. I had help in the safe. She, she did that. So she placed all those and, and it, Mary said she can find stuff. Well, tonight, we couldn't find my cash bag. It doesn't have money in it, but nobody, nobody has any idea where I put it. So we're still finding little, you know, it'll take me a while at my age to find...
Well, I do that every day with my car keys, so.
Yeah, to do the business. And then it's like, I wanted to come in last weekend and work, but I knew I couldn't because I knew I wouldn't be able to figure out how to get in the building and how to get back out. So we've still got some hoops to jump through there because, you know, I have some work I want to do. But it, as Dick said, the town manager, that it was because of the people. I mean Bennett, I don't know how she handled it all, above and beyond. And Dwayne, you know, helped us with our desk getting, so I could see my screen. And it was all the little things that make a big difference. So thank you all very much.
And then the only thing I would add is that we really lucked out with the contractors we have because they're very responsive. That if you have a problem or have an issue or have a concern, they get right back to us and let us, you know, tell us what the solution is.
So we, you know, just an aside, and please take this in the, in the, from the source, first of all. Now, we're going to have to have grief counseling. Because the building over here was so small, everybody was in each other's pocket. And they're walking around now saying, I can't find so-and-so. I can't find this. And it's because the building is so big right now. And it's wonderful. It is absolutely wonderful. And again, I jokingly have said, we'll get grief counseling if you miss each other that much. Or maybe we'll have to have a cookout or something. I don't know.
Well, when you look at the new employee physical fitness, I mean, you walk from one end of the hallway to the actually get your steps in.
You get your steps in, you bet.
So the risk management people have been bugging us to have a health and wellness program. I think we now have it. We just have to buy the watches. So, thank you, everybody. Comprehensive plan, I do, oh, sorry. Yeah, of course. I'm sorry. I didn't notice you.
No, that's fine. I just, I just, I just want to say thank you. I don't know if everybody knows, but Martha got all of us flowers. Didn't know who they were for.
That's right.
But...
As I went around to different offices, setting up monitors, helping out, I noticed she was the only one that didn't have flowers, so.
It had to be, it had to be Martha.
I think Diane did it too, babe.
Yeah. So she even had them in the kitchenette in the three windows, so. That was very nice. Thank you.
Yeah, Diane did it too.
It's really sweet.
So with the comprehensive plan, we have submitted... So, with the comprehensive plan, we have submitted all our comments and our concerns and our updates to Southern Maine Planning, and I have an appointment with them on the thirteenth to review some things with them before they send things back to us. So, we are making progress, and hope, hopefully, at the next select board meeting, we'll be able to announce when we're gonna start having the public hearings, because as Martha has told us, we need a year, a month's notice, so, we'll be working on that. Roads, I think Haley, White Horse, White House.
It's at a mansion road, yep. We're just waiting for them to put the new layer of gravel on the ditches, and those will be done.
Shouldering?
Shouldering. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And are we still waiting for them, have they done the lines?
Lines are not done.
No.
No, so we're still waiting for the lines, so. Mike's gonna give us the Salmon Falls Library update.
I am.
There you are.
Brief update for, for the, the work that's being done for Salmon Falls Library. So, exterior carpentry work consisting of replacing clapboards, trim, and exterior painting will start on Monday, October twentieth, and will be completed in approximately six weeks. Exterior and interior blown-in cellulose insulation will start shortly after October twentieth, in coordination with the removal and replacement of the siding. And then, exterior site work is scheduled for early November, weather permitting. One thing that Nancy wanted us to know is that she's currently researching grants to restore the eighteen ninety-three Ladies Aid Memorial Water Trow in front of the library. Trow, right? T-R-O-U-G-H, right? It's not a word I say. Trough, trough, I said trow, I'm thinking some, sorry. Thank you.
Well, we're gonna put trout in the trough.
I don't know, Jesus, it's just not a word I say every day, it's, I apologize.
That's what we're gonna do, we're gonna put.
Wow. That's my first.
But anyway, they've been, Mike and, I mean, Nancy and Joe have been phenomenal in.
That's where your horse would drink.
The trough.
Making arrangements for all this.
My horse has been going thirsty all these years, 'cause it just didn't, so, so the monument needs to be lifted, the wall needs to be repaired behind it, and the landscaping around it, and Nancy just wanted us to know that we're hoping, hoping we're all enjoying our new office, and.
Are they doing all four sides with the siding?
My impression was they were only gonna do two, but I'm not positive, I'd have to ask them. Next up is carry forwards.
Yeah.
Yeah?
To be continued.
Roger.
Anyway, a couple of things I wanted to ask about here, especially in the carry forwards. Diane had emailed me some more information, and that was information I already had, but when I came in tonight, she gave me some new information, so it's still in the process of continuing. But I got a couple of things I wanna, when I was reviewing the warrant tonight, we had some mileage and things that were paid out to a select board member. So, my question is, is when we did the article, they only gave us the stipend.
Right.
So, what we need to discuss is, do I take another piece of the carry forward and set it aside for training mileage and training itself? I wanted to throw that out to you, Dick.
Either, either that, or you don't train and don't take any mileage until June first.
Well, and, and this is the thing, I think at this point, we probably oughta, that's gonna be another addition that I'm gonna have to consider on that. This wasn't, we didn't even think of that when we had two new members come on.
Right.
I mean, with everything we were doing, I didn't, it didn't dawn on me, so I think it would behoove us to sit down and have that conversation. And I'd probably say, I'd make, make a motion to do some money carry forward for training and, and things like that for the select board itself.
Yep.
So, you wanna make that motion, or?
That's why I just did.
Was there mileage for the Town Manager in the budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yep.
No.
No.
That I had talked before about, and we did the carry forward for that, because that was part of the agreement, but we failed to do it for the select board, and I think we oughta come up with an amount.
Yep.
So, you wanna, are we making a motion to look at an amount, or what are we making a motion for?
How much do you think is reasonable for us to carry forward for training and mileage?
Off the cuff, for six months, you know, I gotta, I gotta defer to Bennett, what, you know, the programs are fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars each, and if you're going to Augusta, it's a hike, eighty-five miles at least from the Kennybunk Plaza, so.
Seventy-six from my house.
Okay, seventy-six, rounded to eighty, 'cause you're gonna get lost in the process, so, it's a hundred and sixty miles.
Is there any reasonable expectation that someone would drive?
I was a banker once, but that doesn't mean I can do math in my head.
Yeah. Most people are gonna attend virtually, I would assume.
Well, sometimes they're not offered virtually, sometime, sometimes they're only offered in person, so.
The two I've taken, or about, I took one this September, and I'm taking one at the end of October, they're both fifty bucks from MM, yeah, for members, and I'm taking them both virtually.
Yeah.
So, that's, this select board member at least.
So, it's a hundred and eight miles to go up and back from roughly, a hundred and eight dollars in mileage for a trip, round trip, and let's settle at fifty or seventy-five dollars, seventy-five dollars or so per session, yours have been online, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, five of you times three or four in the next six months, right?
Well, I don't know if we want, I put in a sheet today for my mileage for driving to the Town Hall, for, to sign the warrant, and for coming to meetings. I reread our new five-member select board ordinance, and it spells out right in there that select board members get a stipend, and we get reimbursed for mileage. So, I added up my mileage for the last three months, and gave that to our treasurer today.
Okay.
Okay.
So, to answer your question, I did a quick calculation, I think four thousand dollars would cover a twenty, twenty programs and miles if they were driven, so that's, I gotta think that would more than take care of it.
So, either four or five thousand.
Okay. So, to continue with my motion, it's for four thousand dollars for the select board to cover us for the next, for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Yep.
To be carried forward, it doesn't.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Is there any further discussion? Four thousand. You're welcome. Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Roger? Jack?
Yes.
I vote yes, so, motion carries.
Okay. So, in speaking of carry forward, as we discussed, I believe I brought this up on a prior select board meeting, was for the anticipated reevaluation starting in the summer of twenty-six and going into twenty-seven. And you gave me an amount, it was about two thousand, six hundred, yes, two thou, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. So, what I was gonna do is trying, if we had leftover monies with this carry forward and the one in June of twenty-six, try to offset some of that cost for the evaluation. So, that's another piece that I'd like for the board to consider, is taking part of the carry forward money that we have left from the twenty-four, twenty-five to go forward to the reevaluation.
So, do you need to have time to figure out how much that could be, potentially?
Yes. And.
So.
But I would like to take some of the money from the carry forwards and, and move it, and put it into an account where we have it set aside for the reevaluation, instead of trying to put it on as a tax burden on the people. So, if we can come up with some of the money from what we already have.
So, do you wanna motion tonight, or do you wanna present it at the next meeting with a number?
Well, I could do that, too. Okay, so, I don't, I will come back with the numbers.
So, you wanna table that?
Table it, so.
I'll table this part of it, but I will do the research after you gave me the information, Mary, and take care of that. And if the Town Manager, I know we got a meeting Tuesday morning, do you have anything Tuesday morning that I could come in and sit down with you quick?
Tuesday, the seventh. We are, we are doing ergonomic measurements for five hours on Tuesday, and then, and then the Great Falls meeting, but we could duck aside for a few minutes, I'm sure, I don't need to be at every.
So, Great Falls is at ten?
Right, we got the.
Yeah.
So, we could, we could, we could find some time, sure.
Okay, so, I might try and get some numbers together, sit down with you and review some of them.
So, do we need a motion to table something, or?
No.
No?
We're just.
Okay.
Continue it under old business at the next meeting.
Anything else with carry forwards before we move on?
No, I, like I said, Diane gave me some truer numbers today, she had emailed me numbers before, but it was the ones I had been working with, but she did a little bit more work for me.
Thank you. So, now, we invite Ms. Martha Huff up for an election update.
Wait a minute, you guys have changed my clothes.
And I don't, I don't know if today's the meeting, or the next meeting, we talk about dogs.
Oh, yeah. Absentee ballots have arrived, I think if you watch the news today, you know that. And ours arrived intact, and they will be available, we cannot, there's a new law, we cannot allow in-person voting in front of the clerk until thirty days before the election, which is Sunday, the fifth. So, if you wanna come in and vote in person, get your ballot, and vote while you're right at Town Hall, you need to wait till Tuesday and Hollis, because we're not open on Monday. We will start mailing them out, we're working on that, getting the ballots into the envelopes for people that had ongoing absentee ballots, we had some people call today, which is fine, you can call, you can talk to Crystal, her extension's twenty-seven, and she'll take right care of you. And we'll vote, we haven't reached a final approval yet with the state elections office as far as moving our voting place, but I think once the paving's completed and some more lines are drawn on, I think they'll do that. And Dick and Alan, and I believe Crystal today worked on getting the, we need to set up the absentee ballot box, and I think we have agreed that it's gonna go on the, well, if you're looking at Town Hall, which end is it gonna go on? The, the right end.
Right hand side.
Yeah, so, it'll be, for those of you that have been in the clerk's office, that this end, the meeting room's at the other end, so it's gonna be at the clerk office end, and it's gonna be, there's a walkway, and they're gonna set it, so it won't be like, you're not gonna run over it when you're turning around, but it's gonna take us a few days, we're gonna shoot for Tuesday to have it ready, but if you get a mail-in ballot, you may have to bring it, physically bring it into the office if that cement isn't set up yet, and we can hook into it, but they're, they're working on it very diligently, and I really appreciate that very much. And, and while I'm here, I wanna thank the town, too, 'cause we have a copy, or in the Town Clerk's office, and I knew we did a lot of paper, but we had to replace our paper today, so that tells you how much paper the clerk's office generates or copies. And I knew we did a lot, we've always had to go to another office to do it, so it's very nice to have one right in our office, so thank you very much for that.
And there's what, two articles on the?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, and I believe, Bennett, you already have him scanned in?
Yes, they're on the Town Clerk's page.
I knew she would.
Under election.
So, Bennett has scanned in the sample ballots, and they are on, if you go to the www.hollismaine.org, the real Hollis website, and you go to Town Clerk under election, she's put that on there, and there, the state of Maine also does a voter guide, which is scanned in there as well, which gives you the pro side and the con side of each, each of those two articles, and then a summary, so you, and you can investigate how you, what, how you wish to vote, and it gives you the, all the facts on either side, and that's always very helpful from the state. So, that's, we, we have it posted at Town Hall as well, most people do things on, online, so it is there, but if you want one, just ask, and we'll make sure you get a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay, under new business, we have a presentation from Bruce Gannett on Hillcrest Cemetery. Welcome, Bruce.
It's not Bruce, Butch.
Butch.
Oh, sorry, Butch, Butch.
Get out your name, please.
It's somebody else, right?
It's all right, Mary. For some reason, people have been calling me Bruce that I've known all my life, and they do it, I don't know, maybe they think Butch isn't a good name to use.
No, no, I like Butch. But it's something else, right?
I do have a real name.
Yeah.
The long and the short of it, the reason I'm here, the Hillcrest Cemetery at the top of Tearcat Hill, I always called it when I was growing up here, High Street, the cemetery on the left when you come up High Street, is Hillcrest Cemetery. Most all cemeteries in town have a cemetery association, as did Hillcrest many years ago. It has been dwindling, and it was down to two people, and they had put all the time in that they wanted. They approached the town to, and said, "Hey, you're gonna have to take over the cemetery, 'cause we're not gonna do it anymore." Mary asked me if I kind of bird-dogged, I guess, for lack of a better term.
I asked Bruce, but.
But step forward, it's okay. So, what has happened is, we had a meeting up at the Bullshit, one of the people who was on the board was Sean Surratt, he's been a, he's been a treasurer for probably over twenty years. There's another fellow named Joel Gulfstrom, who does the mowing up there, and lays out the, the plots for burial, and takes care of the sales and whatever, and they send the check to Sean, and he puts in the bag, whatever. Sean, not Sean, but Joel Gulfstrom is agreeable to staying on and doing the mowing, and doing the layout of the graves, and where to put the stones and things like that, which is good, but I think the town is gonna have to take over the management of the cemetery. I think we should, I think the town should try to put together a cemetery commission or committee, however you wanna phrase it, to try to take care of the daily details or whatever, but, but as far as the mowing, things like that, it's gonna fall to the town.
For a cost?
A cost for a year, and runs probably seventy to seventy-five hundred dollars. The lots right now sell for eight hundred and fifty dollars. So, if you could sell ten lots a year, you could mow the cemetery, but you're gonna run out of. run out of property after a while, and you're not going to sell a lot. So, I mean, it's, it's going to, it's going to be a struggle, and it's going to be on the taxpayers, I would guess, if the town's going to take over and pay for the cost of mowing. There's probably enough money in the bank to take care of half of next year. I, I have told the town manager and the selectmen that I would serve on the committee, cemetery committee, and that I would, I would chair the committee if, if nobody else wanted it. I would work on the committee if somebody else wanted to chair. What we need is committee, is volunteers for the cemetery committee.
So, how many would you recommend, Butch?
Who would I recommend?
Mm-hmm.
Any, any citizen who wants to be involved in, in the good things that happen in town. Anybody that might have relations up there, or they may already own cemetery plots up there and would like to be involved in seeing that the places, the perpetual care goes on as it was advertised. I, I don't know what else I can tell you. I'd say the cemetery is probably two-thirds sold, or not all, all the sites, two-thirds of sites are sold. They're not all filled yet. Okay? So, that, that's basically what's going on with Hillcrest Cemetery. Some question?
Yeah, I know Sean had approached me about that a, a while back, and I guess it was, you're saying an association. Are there other ones that we have in town, Butch, that the town covers that still has an association, or is there some type...
I don't know if there is, Roger. I, I have thought about this, and there's a cemetery up, Riddland Cemetery, it's called, up on the Dyer Road. I don't know if there's any cemetery association because it, it's a hit or miss place. I, I know about the cemetery because I put the flags out for Memorial Day every year. So, I'm familiar with, with quite a few cemeteries around town. I don't know of any other cemeteries that the town actually is responsible for the care of them.
There's none.
Yeah. There you go. Okay.
You know I respect you to the nth degree, but I just want to say that I did a paper on this, but I can't remember how many cemeteries we have in town. It's 52? Thank you. See? All right. And the town owns no municipal cemeteries. In my understanding of the law is you cannot use municipal funds on private property, which these cemeteries are all private property.
Right.
If you, my caution to you would be, if you take this to a vote and you accept one, you're probably accepting all 50, and you're creating a whole new department because you've got to do the opening, closing of the graves. The record-keeping is going to be quite interesting. Because we have no municipal cemeteries, if you have a municipal cemetery, the clerk has the burial permits and all that. Hollis's burial permits are very sporadic, even today with the technology that we have. So, you've got the cost of bear, granted, you can charge, but you've got all these little cemeteries out in the woods and different places. We are responsible to put flags on them and mow the veterans' graves. Is that correct?
We're responsible to take care of ancient cemeteries and veterans' graves.
Okay. The agents, that's new to me, the ancient cemeteries.
Ancient cemeteries would be something that was prior probably to 1880.
Oh, okay. Because that, we used to have an article on the warrant, probably 30 years ago now, that used to say to purchase the veterans' flags and care of the ancient cemeteries. And that kind of went away over the years. And I was told we had a carry forward for that, and I don't know if there's really such an account or money in it. But I just say, this needs to be explored. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm not trying to influence you. I'm just trying to state the facts out there, that if you take on one, you're taking on 52 of them. And I know there are others that maybe have associations or small bank accounts left, and I'm talking tiny bank accounts left, maybe just a couple. And then the rest are just, you know, probably by donation are they getting mowed. I know, I tried to, Dick and I had a few minutes to talk about this, and one of my suggestions I made to him is, because we're not the only town in this position, is maybe we look at asking the legislature to somehow give tax credit to the people that care for these cemeteries, because we have many people who have a cemetery on their lot, and they take care of it, or they maintain it. This may not be a new idea. It may have been tried years before. I don't know. But I, to me, that just seemed, it's not burdening everybody, but if you have one and you take care of it, is there somehow you could get a discount or a tax? You know, it wouldn't probably be a lot, but maybe cover the cost of your gas. I don't know. And, and I get it. All these cemeteries are struggling. Many of them, of the older ones, don't have associations anymore because those people are long, long, long gone. So, but you're, you know, I would just say, if you're looking at one, you're probably looking at all of them, and that. The other thought I think, too, is you don't know who's buried there. Some of them have records, some of them do not. And what is buried there? I mean, are we taking on any legal liabilities for somebody that may have put something in the ground because they could? You know, there's just a lot of things to think about with this. So, just my two cents worth, as usual. My apologies for that, but, so, thank you.
So, Butch?
Gerald.
Gerald.
Just don't call me late for something.
It's kind of a catch-22 where you can't spend town money to do something unless we...
Well, I think we need, I think we need to do some... I think we need to do some research on what the, what the law really says as far as veterans' cemeteries and veterans and...
Okay. You asked me to look after it, so I'm trying to look after it.
Have you, have you heard of any other towns like in a similar position? Have you, do we have any use cases of this?
No.
No? There's got to be something out there that we can look at and see how they deal with it.
Well, I'm sure there's, there's municipal cemeteries around.
Right.
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 In that situation, it's either the clerk or someone that handles the burials and the sales and all that. And I try to get us very hard at Town Hall not to be selling cemetery lots from there. There are people that are connected with cemeteries because 10 years from now, they're going to come back and say, I bought this lot here at Town Hall. No, they didn't. They didn't buy it from Town Hall. They bought it from a private entity. And, and I actually was involved in a cemetery, too, and I walked away from it for the time because I said, no, I have my clerk duties that I need to take care of and not that. So, I mean, I think you'd be creating a whole new department to manage that kind of thing. Some of these cemeteries probably have records, which I'm sure Hillcrest does.
Oh, yeah.
And Meeting House Hill has some, and Riverside has some, and I think Bear Hill has some, some of the other little ones. Well, I take that back. In 1957, was it, that a man, his last name was Frost, he went around to all the cemeteries in New York County, and he did them by town, and he, he listed everybody that was buried there. It's on old mimeograph paper. It's not necessarily alphabetical. It's, but we do have that as a record. So, he did, he just took it off the stone. So, if there wasn't a stone and you were buried there, you're not on that list. But we do have that as a kind of a historical record. I think the man knew what he was doing. He did all the New York County towns with that, but, yeah.
Okay. And I took all that information that was in their notebook.
Yes.
And put it in a computer.
Oh, good.
And I, well, it's probably 20 years old, 25 years old now.
Yep.
Because that's when I did it. So, it's a lot, it's a lot of information out in there. But I can usually find somebody that's buried in Hollis by cemetery and so forth.
Didn't you do GPSs, too, or...
I did GPS on all cemetery shit.
Well, thank you, Butch.
Okay.
So, I think we'll have to think about it. Thank you, Bruce Butch.
Yeah, good. Well done.
Okay, we're ready for the town manager updates.
Thank you. First be, first and foremost, I want to thank Poland Spring for coming in tonight. They were, they were full of information. I am pleased that they were here. And I want to thank the Maine Woodbank Network. I'm sure they never would, thought they were going to hear from me, but we all know where we've been for the last 90 days. It's been quite a, quite a reach. And so, I emailed out, and they said, see you on the first. So, both of them, thank, thank you very much for coming in this evening. So, we've already heard that the move has consumed much of everyone's attention, but today was a big day for those who have not paid close attention, and the former building called the Town Hall is no longer. And tomorrow, the trucks will be backing in, and the excavators will be lifting all of that material into their barrels and their tanks to haul it off to a safe environment. Following that should be some earthwork to flatten the slight mound, and then eventually we'll see some blacktop and some parking lots spacing and lines that will look good. I want to thank Mike Hurnois for his leadership in initiating a workshop between the Select Board and the Planning Board. I thought it was a, a wonderful experience to put mines together, iron out some wrinkles, and better serve the public and the process in the, in the course of that. So, thank you, Mike, and thank you, Planning Board, and Select Board members that were there. Pardon me. I had a initial meeting with the Finance Committee Chair to discuss the process going forward in our 20...next, I'm just going to say next because I get confused on the years. But anyway, the next budget process and... And then today, I met with the Superintendent of Schools to talk about their budget and their process and what they would like to do, and I'll bring you all up to date on that, more, more information at another time. Final thing I want to put on the table one more time, and it rang a big bell with me today as I was driving in here this morning. I come from New Road on 35, and as I approached the school's flashing lights, a truck with a trailer went by me in the other direction, and I share Jack and Roger's history. I was a cop, and they weren't going any 35 miles an hour. They weren't going 45. I would dare say it was 55-plus miles an hour. Hear me. We have kids that cross that road in the numbers of 75, give or take, every day. And if anybody can show me a kid that comes out of school and says, ho-hum, I think I'll take a nap, I will award you a big surprise. There isn't a kid that leaves a school that doesn't want to tear trees down, climb the highest mountain, and run until they're out of breath for the whole evening. So, they cross that road, and if people are flying through there at speeds like I saw this morning, somebody's going to get killed. That's the bottom line. So, I beg everybody in this town to pay attention to the speed limit, pay attention to the crossing times, which happen to be at the end of school, 3 o'clock-ish, and you can see them. If you want to park there, you can watch them cross over. They come in a big parade, and they're watched carefully by the rec, rec department, but they can't watch every single kid when there's 40 or 50 of them. The road from 35 to the Town Hall, Town Farm Road, has a 10-mile-an-hour speed limit. That is not honored nearly 100% of the time. And when those kids are out there, again, they're bouncing all over the place. I watched the other day, I'm a neat-nick. I watched the other day, they mowed the field, the lawns, everything looked wonderful, and the kids came down the roadway, and they started pulling the leaves out of the trees and throwing them on the ground. They, they're just full of energy. They're not going to pay attention to a car coming down there, and the cars have to pay attention to them. And the best solution starts off with driving the speed limit. We are moving forward with a grant application for new lights, the Criss Cross and Dynamic Speed Lights, which would be on each end of the, of the school zone. We are looking for, I think Rob told me, we're nearing the, the date when we will paint, paint the crosswalk. And I have reached out and asked for a little bit heightened attention with the state police to at least watch the road. I don't care about writing tickets. Just be present, starting and ending times of school, to see if we can just get some attention to the fact that it's a dangerous place. I heard, what, I, I think Chip told me, and I saw something in an email, there's 260 or 70 kids in the school, and we're getting 70-plus of them, give or take, every single day. And they're just full of energy, and I don't want anybody to get hurt.
What was Lieutenant Burton's...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Lieutenant Burton's response to that request?
He says he, he will let the guys know. And I've heard that they were, somebody was stopped yesterday.
Yep. Down, yep.
Right? And so, they're here. They're there. But I don't, I don't expect them every day. Frankly, we don't want them every day. But we do want them enough times to slow the traffic down. I don't know any other way, other than nails in the road, maybe. That won't be polite. I'm all done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we got the speed limit sign out there that lights up.
Yep. Yep. The fire chief moved that over, and that helps remind people of the speed, the Dynamic Speed Sign coming from Sucko Road.
What are we talking on the, on the grant timing in that way? The grant that you're talking about?
Yeah. We're not up for this year. They have, it should be no surprise. Those are about $20,000, a set of those signs, and there's a, there's a line, and we're not at the front of the line. But we have their attention, the DOT attention, and, and I believe that we can get in there at least for the next school year. I don't know that we'll get there this year, but...
Is that the way that we have to do it?
Beg your pardon?
Is that the way that we have to do it?
Oh, we could buy them ourselves, but...
Okay, because it's not a state road type of thing?
No.
It is a state road.
It is a state road.
So, that's why I was saying, like, it's not just the money, it's also the, it's a state road.
Approval of the state road, right?
We could buy our own signs, and they would let us put them up. Or we can wait for the grant and get them for nothing.
It's worth looking into.
Yep.
Sometimes I don't want to shut up. At the DOT, typically, you apply for grants and it's years. They do a, what, a one-year, a three-year, a five-year, 10-year plan. So, you may fall in that somewhere, so, but they typically operate like that, so...
Right.
It may be a while.
These can be a couple of years.
So, if we're talking children's safety, and if we see a need there, then this might be something we want to look at more, discuss more?
Put it on the table. What do you got, Roger? How many dollars?
Use some of the carry forward for.
Quick, uh... It's not that. With all the crashes at 4A and 117.
Right.
I tried to get them to put the lit, the light-up stop signs up, and nope. So...
Some of the stuff I keep in the back of my mind, I don't know why, but I know what, how we have that flashing sign out, the speed limit sign out there right now, and that, I believe Poland Spring bought that for us a while ago, and they said, I remember, I don't know why, but they said, oh, we bought one for our plant, too. They, they used to put it in the parking lot. I remember seeing it, driving down Kilipond Road. I'm wondering if that's still around somewhere, if we could maybe borrow it.
Reappropriate it. Well, this, this one we got, I got through DOT, that, the one we use now. Poland Springs did buy another one.
Yeah, I'm wondering if they just have it sitting in the back of their parking lot. Maybe we could ask them. I wish we thought about it while they were sitting here. Maybe they let us have it until we get the new one. I don't know. So noted. I'll take a look. See what we got.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thanks, Dan.
Mike, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I'm, I'm, I've, I've watched those kids from where I was perched, and I can now see them again. I'm just petrified. We're going to have somebody hit.
Yeah.
And not just in the crossing from school, but on our town property.
Yeah, anything. It's, this, this is the thing, I think we try to fast-forward it at all possible.
Anything else? Anything on Zoom, or anybody want to make a comment? Sure.
Again, having to do with Hillcrest Cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
If you have, if you own burial plots, excuse me.
Yep.
If you own burial plots in there, if you could contact me. This is dangerous. You can call me, two oh seven, two two nine, five oh one two. I'd just like, I'd like to talk with people who own property there, who have relatives there. I'm, I'm trying to put together the deeds and the different paperwork that goes with that cemetery. So if you've got an inkling to be on a committee or you've got a burial plot up there you'd like to have looked after or you've got relatives up there and you're interested in that, give me a call. If you don't remember the number I gave you, I'm not going to give it again. Call the Town Hall and somebody will have my number.
This is on Zoom too, I mean, it's on YouTube now, they can rewind it.
Thank you, Butch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else before we move on?
I know I keep you guys forever. I just want to do a shout out to the bus drivers for S eighty-six, while we were talking about that. We've had a couple of things happen this week. Martha Huff is resident, I'm saying this. But they could have gone so very, very wrong. And our bus driver is spectacular. And I hope to take the time to write a letter to the school district to let them know what happened in the situation. And she was on it and stopped before that kid got in the road. It was just an unusual thing. But my heart was like, and I'm like, man, she's on it. She saw them, they, she stopped and it was great. And, and just, you know, they, they just do a great job. And I know a lot of people like to complain about the school district and the teachers and the bus drivers. But in my opinion, they do a great job. So I just want to say thank you to them.
Thanks, Martha. Next on the agenda, we have the need for a special town meeting. As many of you were aware, on the warrant with the tax collector, we limited her salary and we want to change that. And we did talk to a lawyer and the only way we can change that is to have a special town meeting. So we need to figure out when we might do that and how we would do that. So it would be a warrant. It would be like, you know, we have the, like the moderator and then you have your articles underneath the warrant to have people come in and vote in person. Martha?
You'd need to sign your warrant at a public meeting. So if you're looking to do it as soon as possible, you'd have to schedule your warrant signing for the next meeting that you guys have, if that's what you're looking at. I don't know what the date is on that.
Right.
And you're just talking about one question.
Well, we might add a couple. Because we need to clarify the cluster housing. We didn't get all the...
I thought the Planning Board agreed to do that, to submit it to you guys in March. And you would write the warrant in April and they'd vote on it.
No, the cluster housing was ceased or they just, they took it out of the zoning ordinance, but all the sections didn't get taken out, so...
Well, I, I just thought we'd all agreed that that was going to be all cleared up at one time. That's your business, you guys write the warrant, but I'm adding my two cents as you go.
Okay, all righty, thanks.
So after we sign the warrant, the timeline?
Well, I don't think you need to have a public hearing because it's going to be an open town meeting. You kind of got me without my books here and stuff. But you would schedule it for, I, I, well, you could schedule it for any night, basically. But usually, if you're meeting on Wednesday night, I don't know how many of you want to come back for another meeting, but you know, and the, and the ten or twelve people you might get will be raising their hand and vote on it and you'll be done and... Yeah. I, I mean, I don't, because you're not, well, if you're doing, I don't know. Because I, I apologize, I didn't know that, I didn't get print off the agenda, so I apologize for that. I don't know, if it's a zoning thing, do you need to have public hearings again? I don't know, so that's beyond me a little bit, without my books.
All righty. Thanks. Next on the agenda is a couple of policy updates. The first one is an update of acceptance for town roads. To just clarify for people exactly the steps that they have to use to get the town to accept their road as a town road. And so was there any questions by anybody on the change in the policy?
Not for me.
Mike?
None for me.
Do you have any questions? Roger?
No, I reviewed it and...
Yes? Dan?
Well, I looked at, I looked over on this afternoon.
So do we have a motion?
Motion to accept policy number twenty-six acceptance for town roads.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then policy forty-seven was an update on the Select Board compensation. Since we switched from being paid on a weekly basis to a stipend, we just needed to change our policy.
Make a motion, we accept policy number forty-seven, Select Board Compensation, second.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Roger, Jack? Dan? And then the final one is policy forty-eight, Training Compensation. And as Roger said, we'll be adding four thousand dollars to cover the training compensation for this next six months, however many months we have left.
Make a motion, we accept policy for number forty-eight, Training Compensation, second.
Martha, how do you vote?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Dan, Jack?
Aye.
Okay. Then I just wanted to bring up that, you know, sometimes we have some issues with the chair. And if somebody else would like to be chair, they are welcome to be chair. But I think that part of the problem we've had with our growing pains with having a town manager is that we don't seem to have an opportunity to communicate as a board. So I think we need to look at how we're going to do that. Because my understanding was we were going to get phones or we were going to have our laptops or...
On communications?
Yeah.
Yes, through the laptops.
Okay.
That's why we, we ordered the laptops for the Select Board so that the town manager could fire us things that...
I guess my frustration is that, that we don't seem to get things done. We don't seem, like, the carryforwards have seemed to take forever and I know there's a process, but...
Well, the carryforwards sit there and have to do with how we spend money. And each time I start to do something, an issue comes up that it, that changes it.
But I guess my question would be, how long is it going to take? How long before we make a final decision on what the carryforward is going to be and get the budgets?
I'm going to meet with them on Tuesday.
And get the budgets to, from the final budgets from last year to the town manager so he can start moving forward.
And I just got updated information from the treasurer today.
Okay. But I guess my frustration is that, that, you know, people seem to get upset if, when I'm here, if somebody asks me something, I make a decision that, you know, they want to be included and I don't really know how to make people included. So I guess it is, if you want to have a different chair, please feel free to decide you want a different chair.
Well, the decisions of the day-to-day are through the town manager. Everybody's supposed to go through the town manager. And then he in turn, if it's important enough, contacts us to get feedback on if he needs to deal with something, correct?
That's why Butch was here tonight. That's why the Poland Spring folks were here, the Maine Woodbank was here. Because I thought there were things that you should hear. And if you're interested in pursuing, you let me know and we'll, we'll continue the conversation with any of those. So absolutely. I mean, those are folks that came in to see me during the last ninety days. By the way, today is ninety days.
Time flies when you're having fun.
It flies when you're having fun.
Yeah. And again, there you go.
Okay. So we're at purchase orders and payroll.
Okay. Warrant last week, eight hundred and forty-two thousand ninety-four dollars. Part of that was the new building and then part of that was all state paving the roads. Warrant this week is fifty-nine thousand six thirty-one. Payroll last week was forty-two thousand four oh two. Payroll this week is thirty-six thousand seven ninety-six.
I guess so.
And I don't think we have any purchase orders tonight.
So... And who would like to do correspondence and announcements?
I can read them.
Thanks.
All right, there is home energy assistance program and guidelines for CMP electric phi lifeline program. Any wood available for heat assist program?
We do have a couple of people that have asked if we had any wood available. And most of them are eligible for general assistance. However, everybody I call that usually supplies wood has already supplied all their wood and is totally out of wood. So if anybody has any wood available, a quarter to, I would really appreciate a phone call, thanks. And I think last time we talked about the home energy assist program. And I don't know if Bennett has had time to put that on the webpage. So if, she's going to get that on, it has guidelines and the phone numbers. So we had talked about that last meeting. Pardon?
Just one more thing.
Yep.
All right, so another thing is there's a Maine Public Utilities Commission notice on CMP's proposed increasing distribution rates.
And Dan, that's right here, if you just want to review it real quick with people.
So this is a notice we received. It talks about on or around September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, CMP intends to file a request with the PUC to increase the distribution rates. It goes on to list about the approximately monthly bill impact. For year one, it's a seventeen dollar impact. Year two is another five. Year three is another four. Year four is number four. Year five is a number five. So it's a five-year total of thirty-five dollars in the distribution fees. Talks about CMPs, how much they're going to make as an increase in revenue. A five-year total of four hundred twenty-seven million dollars. I'm sure you guys can find all of this on the PUC's website. This is a call, they're asking for your opinions on this to see if the public utilities will intervene on their requests. There's a time of October fourteenth at six PM at Hilton Garden Inn, Five Park Street in Freeport. There's another meeting, October fifteenth at six PM at the PUC office in Halliwell. Let's see, there's also online participation at www-main.gov forward slash M E O P A, forward slash P U C dash information. So anyone concerned about your CMP bills going up, please contact the Public Utility Commission. Okay, lastly, there's a rabies vaccination clinic sponsored by the Hollis Animal Clinic. It's going to be for the towns of Hollis and Buxton and the Vacation Land Dog Club. It will be held on Saturday, December sixth, from one to three PM at the Buxton Public Works Garage, two hundred fifteen Portland Road in Buxton. The cost is eight dollars per vaccination, cash only. Dogs must be on a leash and cats in carriers. Bring your pets, previous vac certificates for faster service, and a three-year vaccination. That's all there is for correspondence and announcements.
Thank you. And just, and aside is, you know, even though it's only seventeen dollars for some people, that's a very significant increase in their electric bill. Because some electric bills are really expensive, especially if you live in some of the apartments that we have where the heat is downstairs and upstairs. Most of them are using electric, you know, plug-in, whatever you... Space heaters, that's the word I was looking for. Thanks, Martha. So their electric bill really goes up in the wintertime when they're trying to keep the upstairs warm where they sleep, so... And then the only other businesses, Mike wanted to present a little proposal.
Yeah, do I need to make a motion to open up discussion about that or can I just make the proposal?
I think you can make a proposal.
All right, so I've been watching other Select Boards meetings on YouTube. And I've noticed that all, if not, many if not all, had public comment towards the beginning of the meeting. And so they, so a couple of Select Boards, what they would do is they would have something to the effect of they would have the welcome from the chair. They would say the pledge of allegiance, which I am also going to make a motion to hopefully get everybody on board with that. And then it would be either the minutes and then public, open up for public comment. Just so, and what they would say specifically is, is there any public comment for items that are not on the agenda? Which I think is an important distinction. Because if we have an agenda item, we don't want public comment before that, that agenda item happening. So that would be my proposal, to have public comment move from ten, number ten, for example, in this meeting to, let's just say, number two or three at future meetings. Just so, discussion, thoughts?
I, I think that it gives individuals, come to the meetings, the opportunity to be able to speak, say what they want to say or need to say, and then be able to leave if we have a lengthy meeting. But, so...
This is a perfect, I think tonight's a perfect example of it, you know? Just like, we're two hours in. If someone had something that had public comment, they had to wait two hours or more to do it, so... Any, any reason to not do it? Anyone's mind?
I can't think of anything.
I think it's a great idea.
Because, I mean, you're right. We're here to, to help the people and the public first. And if they want to come in and say, here's something that needs to be addressed, we hear it and then if we need to...
We can come back.
Or we can make it an action item at another meeting.
Right.
Okay. Any more discussion? I'll make a motion, we'll, we'll make it happen.
So you're going to make a motion for both things or...
I'm going to make a motion separately for this, the pledge of allegiance.
All right.
So I'm going to make a motion for the moving of public comment to after minutes, I guess. It, it depends on what the agenda, I'm not sure what I'd say for the motion. So more towards the beginning, I'm not sure. What would be a good motion for this?
Well, you're going to move it from ten to two.
Ten, after minutes, if, okay. I'd like to make a motion to move public comment for non-agenda items to number two or after minutes.
My second half.
Okay. Um, any more discussion? All those in favor? Mike?
Yes.
Yep.
Roger? Dan, Jack?
I'm good.
Okay.
Me too.
And I'd like to make a second motion to stand up and say the pledge of allegiance after a call to order and roll call, or should be before. I'm not sure. Let's just say, stand up, face the flag, say the pledge of allegiance after call to order and roll call at Select Board meetings going forward.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Roger? Jack? Dan? Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, we're at, uh-oh. We got upcoming town committee and board meetings. Who wants to do that one before a public comment?
Okay, so... I can do it if you want me to. Board of Appeals meeting, oh, sorry. The broadcast meetings will begin at the new town hall, this is said in the, kind of the beginning. The broadcast meetings will begin in the new town hall meeting room on Monday, October sixth. So the Board of Appeals is going to be the first meeting in the new public meeting room, which is really exciting, on Monday, October sixth at six PM. The Planning Board meeting in public hearing on Wednesday, October eighth is at seven PM. There's a sports complex committee meeting on Thursday... There's a Sports Complex Committee meeting on Thursday, October ninth, at seven PM. And then we meet again, uh, for the first time on Wednesday, October fifteenth, seven PM. And there's a Conservation Commission on Thursday, October sixteenth, at five-thirty PM.
And then I only have one more thing, I know I sound like Martha now, but I've had an inquiry on a piece of property that we have that, um, the individual died, and I think it's a, um, trailer and a piece, and land associated with it, and I've had a question if we're gonna put it up for, um, auction, or put it up as real estate. It's a tax-acquired property, I think, I don't know, Bennett? It's tax-acquired. So, it's a foreclosure, so I was wondering if there's any way we can move this piece of property along, 'cause I think there's a requirement to notify the family for ninety days and stuff like that.
Yeah, you gotta go through that process, because state now-
Right, yeah. So I was wondering if we could sort of work on that and get that moving along, however we would do that. So...
Yeah.
In her spare time, she'll help me.
Perfect.
Well, there, there is a, a policy on, on it, and then I just printed off the update that they gave us at our, um, select, at the new officer training program, too. So I think we can probably work it out. But I think you, I have had, he's called me two or three times, someone very interested in purchasing, so... Okay, public comment, do we have anybody on Zoom? Tom? You got anything? Martha? Dwayne? Martha, no dog?
I think I made enough comments.
Okay, anybody from the board, Mike?
Have a wonderful night.
Roger?
He, did you attend your GA training yet?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, part one, part two is coming up.
Wow, nice, always room for Jello. Well, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
No, good.
Dan?
What's up?
Dick, anything else?
No, we're ready to go.
Okay, so Jack, we're up to number eleven, it's usually nine.
No, make a motion to adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for attending.